Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for March 18th, 2019. First agenda item is signing of the warrant.
Move Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
And I would make that unanimous. Second agenda item, under, I'm sorry, second item under Agenda A is approval of the March 7th regular session meeting.
Move Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Next agenda item tonight is invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak?
Behind the pole.
I'm sorry.
Mike Soares, behind the pole.
I'm sorry.
Can you see him? I didn't know if you could see him.
Gentlemen, for the record, my name is Mike Soares, for Danila Drive. I'm the person who sponsored the citizens' petition to put the article in the warrant to change the number of selectmen from three to five. And listening to the meeting from March 7th, I felt terrible that I didn't give you guys the background information, the reasons why. I think it's a better approach, and so I was hoping to remedy that today. Here I have a quick document.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
It basically just shows the municipalities in Massachusetts, the form of government they have, the number of selectmen, whether they have a mayor, town manager. It's just a little bit of background information. The question was asked, what problem are we trying to fix? It's not necessarily a problem, but simply, Will, you said you had to sign because we've always done it that way, with a line through it, right?
Yeah.
Doesn't make it the best option, right? So I think five is better. If you look at that list, you'll find that Milford is the largest town in Massachusetts with only three selectmen. It's one of only four towns in Massachusetts that have a representative town meeting and three selectmen. So those typically go hand in hand. Once you've reached a point where you're at representative town meeting, you typically go to five. We're 64th in terms of population out of 351 municipalities. That puts us at 20% in terms of population. The 19th largest town in Massachusetts out of 294. When you look at those 294 towns, you'll find that 148 of them are at three, 145 are at five, so almost an even split, and you have one oddball at seven. The town of Wakefield has 10, seven selectmen. So that's just some background information on the numbers. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's the right thing to do. So a few reasons why I think it's the right thing to do. I think it makes our elections a little bit more civil. What I mean by that is you look at the school committee races, you always have at least two open seats, and you have multiple candidates running for that seat, and you simply can't get elected by taking someone else down, right? To get elected, you have to bring yourself up. You have to show what you have to offer, Milford. And I would much rather see elections that are civil in that manner than trying to go after each other and bring another candidate down, and I think we see that way too much these days. I believe it leads to a more diverse and representative board. I took a very small sampling, and this is by no means scientific. I took some towns that have five selectmen and found that they had a board that had 25% women representation. I did a small sample of towns with three, and they only had 15. So again, a very small sample, but I think the trend overall shows that you get a more diverse board. If you have more members, it leads to more opportunities, and again, it makes the elections more civil, makes people more encouraged to run. I think it adds, or makes for a more efficient Board of Selectmen. We all have families. Occasionally, those family members may work for the town. You may have a conflict of interest, and if there's a situation where one member has a conflict of interest, another person is absent, and there's a, an agenda item related to that conflict, you have, you're forced to reschedule that meeting. Because a board of three, two members make a quorum, you can't have a simple one-on-one conversation ever about any town issue at all. So at least with five members, you could have that one-on-one conversation without breaking any open meeting laws. And I look at the, the school committee, and you see that, you know, they have seven members, and I think part of that reason is because the idea of conflicts of interest exist, the possibility for multiple members to have teachers or staff that work for the school is one of the reasons why they have seven members, so that you reduce the likelihood of not being able to conduct business on a certain topic. Another issue is I think there's a lot of people in town who, who believe that we are too big to have a city form of government, and I, I would hope that this move would dissuade them. I would like to stay at town. I think that's the right, the right form of government for Milford. But a lot of people think we should be more like Franklin, where they have a town council and a town manager, and I think by making this move, it would, it would push back on that. Lastly, this article would not make the change. It would simply put the, the question to the town, to a town ballot, your town question. It wouldn't recall for a special election. It would happen in the normal April 2020 elections, where there would be a simple question on the ballot, so it wouldn't add any extra cost to the town. And so that's really the background information of what I had. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, have a good night.
You open it up to the board?
Yeah, normally, we don't, you know, have, you know, back and forth discussion for, you know, citizen participation, but you're also appointed member of the FinCom, and for a lot of reasons, I wanted to talk to it. So we talk about, I'm just going to go over some of the high points. Civility, diversity, including gender, efficiency, absence, one-on-one meetings, and so here's the way I took our vote in deciding what should be on the town meeting warrant. I looked at it and said, in general, citizens' petitions should have their, their day at town meeting. And the only thing I, the only thing I'd recommend is that meetings getting delayed, absences, efficiencies, look for examples so that when probed at it, because you can feel strongly about something, that doesn't mean it's supported by data. And where there are inefficiencies, where meetings can't be held, we can't get quorums, we've had to reschedule, you know, civility, I'd look for examples of where, you know, we've had uncivil elections. And that's what, that's what I was thinking when, because I, I thought about some of these things. What would be a reason why we would add more? The only thing I can tell you is it probably means longer meetings. And, you know, I've always been of the opinion, I don't know that more voice, I don't, I don't know the answer, so I want to hear the dialogue at town meeting. My only suggestion for you is to look for examples where we're unable to get quorums, where we had absences, where it was uncivil elections, and, because then I think town meeting would be more likely to respond, and that would be my only, it's a data thing, right?
Sure, yeah.
It drives decision-making.
Sure, thank you.
So that was my only comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, Mike, thank you for, for coming in and doing that, doing your presentation. Mike and I got to speak privately. We were at a social gathering, and we, we had a nice chat as we usually do. So I appreciate it. Again, it's a citizen petition. I think it should be debated at town meeting and decision made, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next agenda item, public hearings. There are no scheduled public hearings this evening. So next agenda item is scheduled appointments, and we have Guido and Son Retail Package License Amendment. Go right ahead, if you could state your name, just.
Mary Guido.
This is a simple change of entity, right?
Yes, changing from a sole proprietorship to an LLC, which we've already formed, and we just are adding two more owners to the license.
Add it two more hours?
Owners.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, based on my read and my opportunity to read this, the application seems clear. Change of entity, you go to an LLC, you add owners, this is, you know, pro forma stuff. I would make a motion to approve the change in license.
If I could, you'd allow me to read the department head form first.
Okay.
Please. So building commissioner has no problems, no violations, town planner, okay, no change in actual use, tax collection, no outstanding liens, town treasurer, Chris Pillar, good, fire chief, no problem at all, police chief, no concerns or issues, border health, has no issues, everything is fine, Paul Mazakelli. Nice job.
I'll second the motion, too.
And I would make it unanimous.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you, very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Next is our benefit coordinator.
Hey, Brian, how are you?
Good to see you again.
Just coming this evening to, for a vote to get our health insurance rates approved.
I've got mine with the map. First time I've ever seen it. I've been here, you know, nearly 15, 14 years, not seeing rate reduction come through this.
I would love to take full credit for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Just unheard of.
I, I thought it would please the board.
I don't see how we could vote other than to support, and for the benefit of those folks who haven't had the opportunity to read the detailed information, right?
Yeah, it's too bad they didn't have it on the chart so they could see it, but that's okay.
The, the insurance advisory committee is recommending that we accept a 3.7% rate reduction for the community's insurance, insurance for next year.
Taking it from $936.19 for 2018 to $901.55 in 2019.
That depends, yeah, which program, which plan you have, but...
Right.
Is there anything else?
I, no, that's about all.
You're going to let the data speak for itself, right?
Yeah, I don't need to say too much.
I don't blame you.
That's your motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to accept the recommendations of the IAC.
And I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous as well.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Brian, you thought it would take longer, didn't you?
Did you even speak?
Yeah, no, there wasn't much to say, but thank you so much for your time.
The outline and the information suggested why it's happened, so thank you for helping prepare this.
Thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
There aren't a lot of places I can say that it went down.
It went down.
Yeah. I know one. Okay, next agenda item, I'm sorry, next scheduled appointment is the downtown revitalization committee. Go on up, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening, guys.
How was everybody?
Good, good.
Good, thank you. Go right ahead.
All right, so Ronnie Pagnini, we've got Tony Pinto and Pete Moynihan, all part of the downtown revitalization committee. Anyway, just here to tell you that, what's about the facade program and some, what I feel is signage problems or issues that we could have downtown as the regular bylaws are written. So first of all, the facade program is moving along. The one issue we have, it's a June 30th deadline. We have to get everything basically done by June 30th, and everybody's under a lot of pressure. And one of the, one of the tasks is getting up to code with the signs that are in the windows for the people that want to be part of the facade program. They're in violation, and it's a pretty daunting task for the, the townspeople. Rick's been working hard on it. Matt, the building inspector, has been working hard at it, and it's very overwhelming. There's 30 years plus of violations. Basically, every, every building downtown is in violation. There's not been any really governing of it over the years, so I've got some ideas and see, see where this can go. We want to, first of all, see if we can give a reprieve on the, you know, the eight to 10 people that are participating in the facade program to push out their amount of time where they can take care of their violations in some kind of writing agreement form that, yes, we will take care of these, but somewhere out in the future, and there's a couple reasons for that. Right now, the way the bylaws are written, there's nothing, there's absolutely no signage allowed in the windows now, and it's like, it's not practical, and it's not reasonable. So if you, you know, if you just think about trying to see all the 100 businesses down in the downtown district and approaching every one of them and saying, everything in your window has to come down, just think of that task, and think of how, how the reactions you're going to get from the tenants, you know, the retail, whatever the kind of business they're running. So what I think is we should do a couple things. We're, we want to start investigating what better practices of other towns and see what they do for signage. I feel this thing we want to do is get rid of all that clutter in the windows, all the hodgepodge, that's for sure, but let's come up with a reasonable and practical solution. And I think we need to do that by changing the bylaws, working, I would love to try to help, I mean, work with the town planner and the planning board, see what we can come up with and have some research done, saying, boy, this town allows this kind of signage with this kind of font, give it more of a uniform look, let the retailers show what they want to, you know, display what they want to try to sell, what they're trying to sell, but in a reasonable way and not, not in a cluttered way. So this is going to take time. Rome wasn't built in a day, and 30 years of violations to get corrected downtown is going to be a tough, tough task. So I, I think if we can make it a campaign, but first of all, change the bylaws over a few months, we'll come up with some solutions, take it to the fall meeting, get new bylaws. Now, from that point on, let's have a campaign over a year period maybe, saying, if it means hiring a special person for the year to visit each one of the tenants and help them, along with an architect, to design the right font, the right, whatever they want to say, and really change the overall look of the windows downtown and do it in a positive way, where somebody, like right now, if we correct eight buildings, these people are going to say, well, how come my neighbor is, has 100 things in their window? And it's going to cause a lot of friction, and this is supposed to be a positive thing, and it really is so far. Everything's going really good. We've got some good interest. So I picture over the next year, year and a half, with the right person in charge overseeing it, one by one, correcting the issues in the windows, but giving them a little better bylaw than it's, what's written now.
The other thing to note is that final approval of any award for the facade program, it depends on them being compliant. If we don't have the time or the resources to get compliant, we may risk some or all of the 150,000 award that we're working with here. So some extra time, especially for applicants, but a gradual change, and then, like Ronnie said, you know, a year or so to get everybody compliant.
Mr. Chairman, can I? I don't want to, I'm sorry, Pete, I didn't want to interrupt you, but the regulation that says that these businesses need to be in compliance, is that something this board set forward, you set forth, or the state granting the money? Is it tied to that?
That's a good question. It's, I believe it's the town council put it together, so it's...
So we, we have the ability to amend that?
I believe so, and I think Rick might.
The only question I would have is authority to suspend implementation of a bylaw. I'm not sure.
We don't have that.
I don't think you have.
Yeah, I wouldn't imagine, I just...
One, and number two, I would be very careful to single out any facade applicant as opposed to anyone else, so tread lightly, I guess, is what I'm saying. I'm not sure we have the, you have the authority.
Right, and I don't think we have the authority to suspend, suspend a bylaw by any stretch, that I'm certain of. But my concern or my question is, because I want to see this be done and, and be successful, and we're on a tight deadline, as Ronnie mentioned, we haven't been enforcing the bylaws on Main Street in the downtown district for 30 years. So I'm, I'm just wondering why we're forcing people to go into compliance if the money can still be allocated. So I think that's what we have to figure out, or...
Perhaps.
Ignore our own recommendation that they be brought into full compliance.
It was an incentive, you know, to be part of this program, to clean up your windows.
Yes.
But we're finding out that it's a little bit more...
A deterrent.
Yeah, it's a deterrent, and I, we do have some tenants, I mean, some landlords that are, that are just, it's too overwhelming for them, that the money that they're going to receive is too much work for them to try to clean up their windows with all their tenants and go through that whole process. They want to do it, but it's too overwhelming, so they'd rather not be part of the program. So there's a couple key properties that are owners that are just rather not, and that's the big deterrent. So if some common sense could be put into this, I, I think it would go a long way with making this successful, and us being able to use all that money for what we intended it to go towards the facades, and...
But it's not, it's not that we would not receive the grant if the owners were not willing to clean up their windows, it's just that they wouldn't receive any of the grant, their portion of the grant funding.
Because of what we wrote up, yeah.
Right, but we would still, the community, the town would still get the grant that you applied for and were awarded.
As long as we use it all by June 30th, and that's the problem.
The time is ticking now, so that's, that's the whole thing.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, no, 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 no problem. So let me just say this, just to correct the record a little bit. The attempt in the contract language from town council and with the help of town administrator was an attempt to put common sense into the process, and it's your feedback, going out there door to door and talking with property owners, that gives us additional guidance to modify, amend. You know, I would, I'm following along with what Will said. If we take, if we remove that language so that we don't uniquely enforce to those businesses who join a facade program, then what they're going to get is the same level of enforcement that any other business gets. And that way, we're not selectively enforcing...
That's a good point.
...the bylaw. So, Will, that was a perfect application of, of language that doesn't have us in the process of, I'm, I'm just reversing what might look like, and a suspension for those individuals, which we can't do, nor do we have authority to selectively take bylaws and apply them to one person or another, but to remove the language, as Will suggested, that would prohibit them from taking facade money if they're as non-compliant as the business next to them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Then the issue becomes, how do we get the resources, and what is the process to assure compliance? And we can take that up on a little bit longer term.
Put some thought at that, because it, it could be a nice campaign, a positive one.
Yes.
Let's change the look of the windows downtown and give something that's reasonable for retailers to work with.
I think we need town council.
And you're, and you're here, you're here to say you want to be a part of that, and you want to do it over time, and so right now, somebody would be out of compliance putting a "help wanted" sign in their front window.
Any, any sign at all.
Any sign at all. So, so what I hear you saying is, let's work on solutions that make sense, which town council didn't weigh in on, and nobody's brought back to town meeting. That makes sense to me, and you're willing to be a part of that and work with us and work with our building inspection department, because I can tell you right off the top of my head that the building inspection department, if somebody puts up a sign at a retail store, the building inspection department does not have the bandwidth to go run down there and enforce that issue.
It's a lot of, lot of work, yeah.
But let's come back and look at what our sign requirements are. Maybe there's a way to uniform it, maybe there's a way to selectively say which ones. You know, I look at, like, a realtor, a local realtor who has all of their agents, or had all of their agents in a window, and I look, look and say, that's part of business.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's their goods. It's as much, it's as much a part of business as a mannequin would be in a clothes store with a, with a, you know, apparel on. It says, here's who we have here to help you. So, you know, I think we could come back and make sense and do, do a couple of things. Modify the town bylaws over a period of time, work with retail outlets to talk about what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, and there are going to be some they're not going to agree with.
Yes.
They want to put 20 signs in their windows? You know, I don't know what to tell them, but I think that's a better solution than uniquely enforcing the rules with people that join the facade program.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you had?
And I'll agree with you, having just gone through it kind of personally, there is no enforcement.
No.
There is no enforcement.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, that goes into our bigger argument of trying to properly staff the building commissioner's office. I mean, we, we're still on that, trying to find people to take the roles as the assistants. We, and to take, to take this on, they're going to need another body in there just on a part-time basis, just to, just to work with these businesses, which is something we're going to have to talk about as well, but...
And I mean nobody any disrespect, but I can drive around town and say, well, they had to take this down, well, you know, there's a set over there, and there's a set over there, and there's a set over there, and...
Yeah, so it needs to, we need to do it, but it has to be done in a campaign type of fashion.
Correct.
Systematic, and announce to everybody ahead of time and over a period of time, with the right people doing it in a positive way, and I think that's the only way it can happen.
With, with the final outcome in, in mind, you know, that we're all going to have a consistent, improved appearance, hopefully sustainable with the downtown.
Rick, if you could get Charles to weigh in on it, too, as well?
Sure.
Please. All right.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. I just wanted to be clear that they'll have the same enforcement as any other business under a new proposal, and we're not going to uniquely bind anybody to contract, is, would be the recommendation. But I do want to say one other thing. If there are safety issues, if there are other issues that exist at any of the businesses, we would enforce at the same level that we would enforce businesses with new facade as we would with any other business who's not participating. I just want to...
Yeah, this was just the signage.
Yeah, yeah, right. I just want to, I just want to, because I don't want anybody to go out and misrepresent what the board is saying, right?
Right.
And somebody might accidentally do that.
Yeah, no, you're right.
They're not, they're not uniquely prevented from being enforced, our enforcement's requirements exist, and we may have to go down to any, any business.
Right.
So it sounds like, it sounds like there's a possibility to amend the contract for the facade program, to allow these folks to go out and expend before the deadline, which is looming, and to remove language specifically and uniquely, making them have to be in compliance prior to being part of the, the program.
Sign compliance, yeah.
Sign compliance, yeah.
I think we should let town council weigh in on that. We've got plenty of time to, to vote.
Well, they have plenty of time to expend the funds.
Well, no, no, but I mean, we could bring it back the next meeting.
Well, the thing is, we're, we're dealing with the people right now, and we've, we've got them right now, and it's like, I mean, I...
What is two weeks going to make?
Just putting off the, just putting them off. Everybody's ready to go, but we can't get, seem to get to it. They got ninety days to expend the funds, right?
Right, but the problem is, my opinion, if we take a vote on it tonight, and then town council comes back and tells us, oh, you can't do that, you have to do this and this, you know, why don't we just wait? Rick, your feeling?
I'd like to get an opinion from, from Charles, and if need be, I'd have a quick meeting if we needed to rectify it.
You could do that, too.
Great.
Do you have any, any concerns that jump up about uniquely making these businesses compliant, taking out that language? Because that's the proposal.
I, I do, and the message that it sends, and the authority of this board to do it, that's really the question I have, that I haven't checked into with council.
Yeah, let me say, let me say it this way. We put into a contract that those businesses that participated in the facade would have to be more compliant than their neighbors in order to participate in the program. By removing that, all we do is simply make them equal to their neighbors and not ineligible to participate in the facade program.
to participate in the facade program. So I don't think we're selectively enforcing at that point. I think we were selectively enforcing, actually, when you think about the language in the contract.
Right, we're just selectively enforcing them, not everybody else.
Be consistent with the rest of the town. Whatever we're going to enforce, we're going to enforce. They may be visited, they may not be visited.
Richard doesn't like that.
No, but I, you know, honestly.
That's what I'm trying to.
No, I know, I just have a problem with the authority, number one.
Oh, the authority, I understand that.
Number two. Well, just the authority, the question to change a bylaw.
No, we're not.
Well, you're, or you're putting a moratorium, you're kind of saying.
No, no, no.
No, we're not.
So we can go out tomorrow and start to enforce.
And they'd be subject to whatever their neighbors are.
Yeah. And honestly, I, when I did that proposal of the facade program, I put that in there for, to get the ball rolling with people to clean up their windows. And, but not realizing how, what a task it was and the kind of conflicts we'll have right away from the person right next to them with the, not being in code, and the person that just had to take everything out of his window, that's going to, I can see the, I've already heard it, the, you know, the conflicts.
We're asking them to clean up the windows and become compliant, but not before they can get in the program, they can make it part of the program. That was one thing we talked about.
No, we did, but, but not, it doesn't, it seems to be, there seems to be a better way of doing it, I guess, now, a more reasonable and practical way, because it's, it's been a.
Well, plus we've run into the resource constraint of helping them
Yeah.
figure out what, how to comply. I mean, we, we have our own.
Yeah.
The town has a constraint.
Yeah.
It's not the business owner's problem.
I still, I, I would feel comfortable running it by the town council. And, and we can come right back, you know, call a real quick special meeting and, and take the vote. That's my stance on it. Two other members.
And I guess I just see it differently in the sense that if that sentence wasn't in there, this would even be an issue.
Right, exactly.
So it's not about suspending, repealing, not enforcing, not doing anything. We, we put something in as a, to encourage.
I wrote that in.
And it's, right, and it's working, now it's working against us, and this is when, you know, sometimes government can't get out of its own way, because now we've gotten $150,000 from the state to improve downtown, but now we can improve downtown and start with this program because people have stuff in their windows and they're not supposed to, but they're not being enforced, and we don't have the, the staff to do this enforcement. So we're going to end up losing $150,000? That's pretty, that's pretty poor form.
But I would say this, the, the advice that Rick and Charles have given us over the last year has been solid, they've been there for us.
Sure, no doubt.
And so I, I agree with Rick that, you know, just give it another, just make it an urgent issue and see if we can solve it.
Yeah, no, I think that's what, I don't think we really have much of an option.
We'll get right on it.
Okay.
All right. Promise them we'll get right back to you.
All right, that's good.
I just ask, is there anything else you need from, from us regarding your, the, you know, the project now?
No.
Just figured we have you here, so.
Yeah, we got some good things happening, though.
I was going to say, we appreciate everything you're doing.
Again, I want to give Mr. Valani some kudos. He's, he's been working hard and, and helping this whole process along.
And, you know, it was part of your effort.
A thousand hats.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't be lost to say, part of your effort and what it spurred this committee to do, and this board to do, rather, is to look at ways where we could help. And it's that energy that's helping. So when we looked at, as an example, the, the park and the parking lot area across from Sacred Heart, we said, nobody owns responsibility for that. We're going to take responsibility for that. We're going to make sure it's cleaned up annually, and we've contracted for that. Where you see four-foot-high weeds along Main Street, we've got a program contracted to make sure those don't exist. So you're helping us to think of, think of this new and different. You know, one of the things that I say that we do sometimes, and as human beings, it's a human condition, is we tend to normalize what we see every day. And what we have to do is look at that differently. And you've helped us do that, actually. So thank you for your contribution, your committee's contribution.
Will said if it's a sign without lying through it, doesn't mean it's right.
That's right. I will say this, one of the more exciting things is establishing the relationship with the state.
Yes.
You know, getting to know who can help us there. The $15,000 grant for the, for the housing study was, you know, a major win for us. The grant writer helped us with that, so whatever we're paying the grant writer, I think that's a significant portion of it. So there are a lot of things, and we just need this momentum.
We do.
So people can see.
That's why I was almost prepared to, I, I am prepared to make a motion. And I'd like to make a motion, I think I'm going to make a motion just to do this, to remove the language in the contract. I'd like to make a motion to remove the language in the contract that uniquely identifies people who participate in the facade program to, to have to comply any differently than their neighbors. I'd like to remove that language. Now, I want to say this. We could start a program six months from now, three months from now, that puts unique effort on the downtown area, and the people that have participated in the facade programs are going to be just as required to, to comply, just as, you know, obligated to comply as anybody else, which is, what I want to do is remove language that treats them uniquely. So again, a motion to remove language that uniquely identifies people who participate in the facade program as having to be any more compliant than anybody else.
With signage.
With signage.
I'm going to second that for discussion. With that motion, we're still going to, Rick, you're still going to get an opinion from Charles?
Yes, I would suggest that, yes.
Yep, okay, I appreciate that. I mean, again, I don't think by removing that sentence, it's necessarily, we're not giving the authority to ignore anything or to not enforce or anything like that, so that's, I just want to make sure that's, that's clear. And Ronnie, based on the language currently there, did it say that they had to obviously come into compliance prior to receiving the funds?
Yes.
Okay. The only reason I ask that is because if it took them twelve months or fourteen months or a year and a half, you know, did, okay. So it said prior to, everything's got to be in full compliance. And again, the only compliance we're actually talking about is the signage.
It's the signage.
So it's not health and safety, it's nothing else like that, so.
It's the signage, and, you know, something could be even written in there that they need to comply by a year if you have to do that, by, no, just keep it the same as everybody else. And then there's, eliminates friction, because we want this to be a positive thing. It eliminates one landlord or tenant looking at his neighbor and wondering why, even though they received money, it's, it's still going to cause, it still will cause a conflict.
Yeah, I know, and, and you know, and we constantly have this conversation here, you know, every, every few weeks or so, that, you know, we're trying to build up our inspections department because one and a half people can't do the amount of inspection and enforcement work that this town needs. That's why when I get phone calls about balloons being on cars down at a car dealership, I'm like, when, when balloons on, on cars at a car dealership is my priority, I'm going to be a real happy guy, but that, that, that isn't my priority yet when it comes to enforcement. So I think we, you know, this board has been pretty, pretty good about that in the sense that when we can get to the point that the balloons are the problem, we'll deal with the balloons. But right now, we can't even worry, we, we don't even have the bandwidth to enforce the signage in our downtown windows because we're dealing with real health and safety issues that, that have to be addressed first, so.
My question, Ronnie, would be how we, if in fact we do change the language in the, in the contract, how are you going to enforce it? How are you going to regulate it? How are you going to?
It's not. It's just the building inspection department.
They can't handle what they're doing right now.
But he doesn't have the authority to do any of that.
No, but I mean, in other words, so what do you, maybe I'm missing a very valid point. What are you actually trying to do before it's time? Maybe I'm missing it.
Yeah, it's as simple as just allowing the signs, not making the person that participates in the program take all their signs down before they receive, before they get the okay to do the program or receive the funds. They have to be up to code 100%, taking all, everything out of their windows.
So what does come out and what stays?
Nothing stays, everything comes out. Unless they don't have a sign over their window, they can have their sign in the glass, but that is it. Even right now, open signs and hour signs, anything you could read five feet back is a violation, and that's every single thing on every single building downtown. It's, it's amazing if you see it.
I see it every day, I drive through downtown.
The bylaws are probably, there's just no common sense or practicality in the bylaws when it comes to window displays or anything in the window. So everything is in violation in the windows as we speak. Going forward, they're going to allow, they're going to, we're going to try to get, approve the hanging projecting signs and also allow an open sign in the hours. That has to be added in. Right now, all those are in violation.
Currently prohibited.
Yeah, Mike, to clarify, what we're saying is that the facade program is currently constrained by unreasonable signage requirements, A, and hour, the town's constraint to not comply, have businesses comply. So those two things are preventing an applicant from being approved.
Or wanting to be part of the program.
Yeah, even, even further back, right? So we're saying, let's move forward with the program, and in parallel, we'll take the initiative to somehow figure out what the best thing to do is with you guys, but get compliance and get a reasonable signage requirement. But we don't want that to hold up the, you know, the ten or twelve people that are really moving for, ready to.
And we're starting now, right?
Yeah, it's, rub is.
So talk about what's going to be in front of town meeting.
Second?
Yes.
I'm making unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Rick, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Rick.
Have a good night, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Next agenda item is town administrator's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just three items tonight. One, hopefully you've seen that, been informed by Parks Director Jim Azim, the trees that were, needed to be removed at Town Park and Memorial School have been removed. I want to thank the Parks Department and the Tree Department for their coordination in taking care of this safety issue. Just a reminder for the April Selectment Meeting schedule, unless needed, as we discussed tonight, the next meeting will be in three weeks on April 8th. We'll then next meet on April 22nd. Again, that's subject obviously, always to change. And then the final item is, I just want to inform the board that we held a department head meeting on Thursday, March 14th. The agenda included information provided by town council and myself on proper posting of meetings and minutes, and also on proper emergency procurement under Mass General Law Chapter 30B. The Finance Director provided an update on fiscal year 20 budget preparation, and the primary purpose of the meeting was the HR Director reviewing and discussing new HR policies and new policies to be presented to this board and implemented in the near future. And that's all I have tonight.
Yeah, first of all, Rick, I want to thank you for helping out in that area where dead trees, very large dead trees existed in Town Park and adjacent to Memorial School. I had heard about it, become aware of it, I observed it, and it was great to see you get to it that fast, and thank you for your help. I know you didn't take down the trees.
I did not.
But, and that's a good thing, no chainsaws. But I want to thank you for your, your part in making that happen. I did want to follow up with you. I was going to, why don't I leave that for, for, rather than town administrator, why don't I bring that up under old business? I got another question for you.
Okay.
But I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
No, no questions. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick, for everything you do every day.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is old business, town administrator, town.
Yes, the warrant has been prepared by town council, reviewed by myself and the Finance Director. It is before you tonight to be finally reviewed and hopefully voted on and approved so that we can post where required and send to town meetings when needed. If the board has any questions, based on the last meeting, there were articles added as per the request of the board for the Police Chief Selection Review Committee, for the possibility of an interim police chief, just two others that were considered and added that are in there. One is to, if needed, fund the new Vernon, I should say Milford Cemetery contract, the Vernon Grove trustees contract, and also we will need to supplement the police union contract.
Yeah.
And the only other article was one that we neglected to put in was for a truck for the Parks Department. So there are, let's say, twenty?
There is twenty.
Five articles? And as your board knows, the recurring articles have been placed in the form of one article. So.
So you need a motion to accept the new warrant?
Yeah, to vote to approve the warrant, if I could. Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, this makes sense to me, so I'd like to put a motion out there to accept the, the updated warrant
Yes.
that we've received. We initially received a draft, as is, as recommended by the town administrator and town council.
I'll second that.
Make that unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is, um, old business, town administrator, some human resource policies?
Yes, Maureen was in here at your last meeting. There was discussion on a number of policies, anti-harassment and confidentiality. She has tweaked, and there's a, tweaked the harassment prevention policy and is now asking the board to review. Obviously, if there are additional questions, they do not have to be approved tonight if the board's ready to move on these policies, then the board would be free to do that also. She highlighted changes in red for the board, hopefully.
Mr. Chairman, I've had the opportunity to review the harassment policy, the confidentiality policy, and the payroll confidential, confidentiality policy, and I'd make a motion to approve as, as provided to by, provided to us by the HR Director.
I'll second that.
Before I make it unanimous, Rick, I just want to go publicly and let the, the good work that Maureen is doing in, around town every single day, it's, there's no doubt that the changes that she made to these policies is, is very good, and I would make that unanimous.
Thank you, I will let her know.
I just have one, old business thing I wanted to bring up.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had, just had a question I wanted to follow up under old business with the question that we had regarding the problematic issue of hiring at step one, if we thought the salary warranted. I know we had asked Maureen and Rick to go back to Personnel Board, and I was just checking, I wanted to check in to see, was there any progress? Do we have solutions? Does it take more, a couple more discussions with them?
It's going to take some more discussions. It was discussed, Maureen and I have discussed it, but it is going to take, I think, some more time.
Okay.
I don't have a resolution for you tonight.
All right. We want to avoid tripping on, and.
Right. Hey, next agenda.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is new business, town administrator, Town of Hoppington waiving a fee?
Yes. The Town of Hoppington has submitted a waiver, or seeking a waiver of the filing fee for a notice of intent they filed with the Milford Conservation Commission. They're going to be replacing a low-level outlet gate at the Lake Mass Pinoc Am. In speaking with the chairman of the ConCom, it's his understanding that we need to have Board of Select an approval per statute. Unfortunately, I have not been able to confirm that with Charles, as unfortunately, he was out today ill. So again, it, it would seem a common courtesy would be to extend the notice of filing, but again, I would have to check on that, and I guess maybe it has to be them. They have not voted to do it because they were under the impression that this board had to do it.
And again, you have not gotten Charles's ruling on it?
I have not.
We could put a motion together, structure it such that.
I would hope so, just so I don't have to delay.
Yeah.
The Town of Hoppington, they're a good neighbor, and obviously
So here's what I would do.
They would assist us.
Here's what I would recommend.
Yep.
Because if we look at the email prepared to, for us, it says the conservation, according to the Milford Wetlands Administration bylaw, Conservation Commission may waive the filing for a fee for application.[1775.83] That's on the last page. This is a document that we were provided. So, with that, I'd like to structure a motion, um, to support the, the Conservation Commission in the waiving of a fee. Should they do that?
I'll second that.
Should they choose to do that?
I would make that unanimous.
Perfect, thank you.
Next new business is Saint Mary of, Mary's of the Assumption Church Permit to Obstruct. I'm not gonna read all this gentleman. It's basically Father Peter Joyce is looking for Good Friday Living Stations at the Cross, begins service in the lower church, walks through the neighborhood to enact the journey of Jesus of Nazareth to his crucifixion, which will occur on church grounds and complete the service inside the church. The date and times are Friday, April seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, at eleven fifty, fifteen a.m. To leave the lower church, walking through the parking lot to Winter Street, head west on Winter Street, turn right onto Main Street, take a right onto Spruce Street, and right onto School Street, take another right onto Pearl Street, take left onto Granite, right onto Winter, into Parish Grounds.
You said you weren't gonna read it.
I know, I started reading, I'm like, got myself caught in this now.
And that's, uh, Good Friday is...
That's Good Friday.
It is.
Friday, April nineteenth.
Nineteenth, yes.
It is the nineteenth, yeah, it looks like a seven, but it's a nine.
It does look like a seven.
Father's writing is a little...
I had that same issue.
Motion to approve? I'll second that.
And I'll make that unanimous as well. Next is a Canvas and Cup, a one-day liquor license. Name of the organization is Canvas and Cup, one eighty-nine Main Street in Milford, fundraiser for one eighty-one family readiness. Again, you can't read it.
Group.
Group. Fall River Mass. Date of the event is March twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, from six p.m. to nine p.m. Will it be a cash bar? No. Is there an entrance fee or donation fee? Yes. Is the event open to the general public? Yes. Is the event held by or held for the benefit of a business or nonprofit group? Yes.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Second it.
I would make that unanimous as well. Okay, next application from our good friends at WMRC. Dear Mr. Valani, I'm writing to request consideration from the Board of Selectment to proclaim, proclaim Louisa Lake be off limits for fishing for a period of just twenty-four hours preceding our annual free fishing derby for the kids on April twenty-seventh. The Department of Mass, the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife will be delivering five hundred trout at noon on Friday, the twenty-sixth. Over the past few years, the lake has been severely fished out prior to our event, and the number of fish caught seems to go down each year. As I have mentioned, this derby is completely free for kids from the entire region. Is a great morning filled with families, donuts, milk, juice, t-shirts, trophies, prizes, and more. I just want to ensure we will have the fish. Thank you for your consideration, and I would be happy to attend any meetings to discuss this further. Would it also be possible at this time to get approval to hang our banner on the fence at Louisa Lake for the week leading up to the derby itself? Sincerely, Dick Ferrucci.
This is an annual event that we approve every year?
No, I'm struggling with, uh, giving approval of a banner that we don't have the authority to...
Yeah, that would have to go through the Parks Department.
Right, yes. Okay, so...
I just wanted to put a plug in. I think it's a great event that they do all the time.
Oh, it absolutely is.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
WMRC, uh, WMRC has been putting this program on, and it's just been a lot of fun for a lot of kids. I only hope that, and wish for them, a nice overcast sky but not raining, good day for fishing, without sun, and, uh, I'd be happy to make a motion to, uh, proclaim Louisa Lake off limits for a period of twenty-four hours, uh, preceding the annual fishing derby, which is held April twenty-seventh. So, I guess April twenty-sixth, and leading to that event would be off limits. Um, and, uh, they always coincide and work with the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife to restock the lake. Uh, great event. So, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
I would make that unanimous. And last item on the new business from the police chief, school zone, Milford High School. In response to the email from Paige Denegris, I went to the area of Highland Street and West Fountain Street where they border the Milford High School campus. Presently, there are school zone markings on the roadway in the area of twenty-six West Fountain Street and thirty-six West Fountain Street. So, I would recommend the installation of a sign indicating school zone twenty miles per hour at the locations where the roadway is presently marked indicating the same. With regard to Highland Street, I believe that the school property is more remote from this location. Therefore, I do not believe that a school zone designation is warranted. Sincerely, Thomas O'Laughlin, Chief of Police.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd move that, uh, we accept the recommendation from, uh, Chief of Police, uh, provide, uh, providing for an installation of a sign indicating twenty miles an hour at the locations where the roadway is presently marked.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous. Next agenda item is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence?
I do not.
There is no executive session this evening, so I motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
And I would make that unanimous. Good night, everybody, and you have a nice rest of your week. Thank you very much.